... meeting for March 15th, 2011 to order. Commissioner Duckham, would you please lead us in the invocation?
Right, please stand. Please bow your heads. Lord, we pray tonight for the victims of the, in Japan, who are suffering from the effects of the earthquake and the tsunami. We pray for their comfort and safety. We also pray tonight for our troops across the whole world that are defending our freedom and defending the very right we have to govern ourselves here tonight. Give us the wisdom and the understanding tonight as we conduct the business of the county. Amen.
[inaudible]
Thank you, Commissioner Duckham. Adam Clark, could you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Hurl.
Here.
Commissioner Letchka.
Here.
Commissioner Rice.
Here.
Commissioner Duckham.
[coughs]
Commissioner Alexander.
Present.
Commissioner Vito.
Here.
Commissioner Mahoney.
Commissioner Williams.
Present.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Way.
Present.
Commissioner Elwell.
Here.
Chairman Shattwa.
Here.
Eleven present.
Entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
I have a motion in support. Any corrections? Commissioner Elwell.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add under 13B-1B, the Lifeways appointment, to add, making an additional appointment to fill the remainder of the term of Monica Mosier.
Other corrections to come before the board for the agenda? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Duly carried. We have a public hearing at 7:10. What I will do is begin public comment, allow public comment, and then I will stop it at 7:10 so we can have the public hearing. So at this time, are there any petitions to come before the Board of Commissioners or Seeing none, at this time, I will announce the first public hearing. Please step forward. You have up to five minutes if you'd like to speak during public comment.
John Wilson, property owner, City of Jackson. I'm going to request this evening that the board consider removing three items from the consent agenda. Mr. Commissioner Duckham has already informed me that one of the three items is going to be removed with a vote, of course, but anyways, I'll touch on all three items and... The first item is consent agenda number three, and this is for a resolution approving a grant application to the Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund. This grant application, if approved, would be used to acquire approximately 30 acres for the construction of a non-motorized pathway connecting the intercity trail to Sparks Park. Our county parks were very fortunate as citizens, and I can speak just for myself, I'm a regular user of the Cascades Park and, and other various parks around the city and county, and I feel very fortunate for our park system. The current condition of Cascades Park, I believe, would be more in tune to this funding. If we could possibly scrap this application for the purchase of the 30 acres, instead maybe submit an application for funding to be used to tear down the wall surrounding the waterfalls and the lagoons, if we could dredge those lagoons. That should be primary. Rather than adding another fund, of course, that would have to be used just for the pathway, I'm sure. I did my homework on this, and this trust fund, the tearing down of the wall and the dredging of the lagoons does fit the criteria, so I just would ask that this be taken off the consent agenda and taken back to the Parks Board, and maybe they can resubmit an application for the tearing down of the wall and the lagoon dredging. Consent agenda number six is a request from interim county administrator Brown to transfer approximately $935,000 from the Courthouse Justice Center Fund to the Capital Fund that will be used for an ongoing maintenance cost at the county tower building. The memo from Adam Brown is somewhat alarming. According to Mr. Brown, he has spoken to the board about, I'm going to quote, "significant capital expenditures coming up, as well as our inability to fund ongoing capital improvements," or, excuse me, capital maintenance cost, end quote. Administrator Brown believes these significant cost items are looming due to the financial matter not being addressed in the capital budget. Maybe, you know, again, this item could be removed from the consent agenda and discussed amongst the full board. Consent agenda number seven, at the request of Adam Brown, would amend the Non-Union Handbook to create a senior management benefit change from the current beginning 15 days of paid time off to 20 days of annual leave. At a time when most public employees are being asked from our governor for some sort of shared sacrifice, along with the citizens of this state, in the form of possibility of increased taxation, this request flies in the face of common sense, simple logic. And again, I hope the board would consider taking this off the consent agenda, discussing it as a full board, and hopefully denying the request. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Seeing none, we're going to go to County of Jackson Hospital Finance Authority Allegiance Healthcare Authorizing Resolution 0311.10, the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I want to thank the board for holding this hearing. I'm Peter Eklund with Exon Eklund, and we're the Authority Council for the Hospital Finance Authority, as well as Bond Council for the county, and Hendrick Shore is with me with, from Allegiance Health. This hearing before you tonight is about a refunding of the county's 2006A and 2006B1 bonds. They would like to do this for some restructuring of their bond payment debt, as well as to remove a bond insurer, which, as you've all been reading in the paper, these bond insurance companies are having their own problems, and it would be more feasible for them to work through different securities with their bonds than this current bond insurer, which is having some, some issues right now, and would also provide more favorable covenants to the hospital. With that, I would like to introduce Hendrick, and maybe he can get into more detail.
Good evening, Hendrick Shore from Allegiance Health. As Mr. Eklund noted, what we're trying to do is take risk off the table with this financing. It involves a little less than $70 million of variable rate bonds because we're concerned about some Wall Street actions with the bond insurers. We just want to take these bonds out of that, that risk pool. There is no new money being financed here, this is simply existing debt. I'll ask Mr. Eklund to validate, but this is a refunding, there is absolutely no exposure by the County of Jackson, Allegiance Health remains solely liable for these obligations.
That's exactly right. The hospital financing authority acts as a conduit, financing vehicle, on behalf of the hospital, that allows the hospital to go to the market and borrow at tax-exempt rates, which obviously is more beneficial to the hospital, but there's no backing, no full-faith pledge by the county in any way. It's merely a way for the, for the county to assist a health provider within their borders.
Do any commissioners have questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any public comment under the public hearing part of this resolution? Any other public comment under the resolution in the public hearing part? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and at this time, I'll entertain a motion on Resolution 03-11.10.
So moved.
I have a motion in support. Any commissioner comments at this time on the resolution? Seeing none, I'll ask you to vote with your lights. Resolution passed 11-0. Thank you, my fellow commissioners.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. This time, we return to public comment. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board under public comment? This would be your time to do it. This is your first time, there is a chance at the end of the meeting also. Seeing none. Any special meetings or standing committees? Seeing none. Minutes of the 21511 regular meeting of the Jackson County Board of Commissioners, entertain a motion, please.
Approved.
I have a motion in support. Questions, comments, or corrections? Seeing none, all in favor of the minutes?
Aye.
Opposed? Duly carried. We've now arrived at the consent agenda. I have a motion, I have support. Now, my understanding is there's some commissioners who'd like to take some actionable items off. Commissioner Elwell.
I'd like to pull item D-David 6 from the consent agenda.
Okay, that will move to item 13, Standing Committees, Personnel, and Finance, and become under their D-1. Any other items? Commissioner Duckham.
I'd like to pull item B-3 for discussion, please.
Item B-3 will be removed. It will be placed under 13B, and we'll call it 2. Any other items for removal? Yes?
Let's remove D-7 for discussion as well.
That will become item 13D-2. Do the chairmans of those committees appreciate those motions? Understand what we've done, Dave and Jim? Okay. At this time, we have an amended consent agenda. Let's use our lights to vote, please. Consent agenda is passed 11-0. We've now arrived at standing committees. County Policies Committee Chairman David Elwell.
Nothing to report, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you. County Affairs and Agencies Chairman David Letchka.
Thank you, Chairman. Tonight, we have the Jackson Transportation Authority, the appointment of one public member. The committee nominates Philip Moynihan.
We have motion in support for Philip. Do we have any other nominations from the floor? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Commissioner Letchka.
Next, we have one public member for Lifeways Committee, the term expiring 2014. The committee nominates James Shatwell, Sr.
Support.
We have motion in support. Do we have any other nominations from the floor? Seeing none at this time, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Duly carried. Commissioner Letchka.
Mr. Chairman, we have, I believe, one vacancy for a, either a commissioner or general public, and they'd like to fill that with Commissioner Hurl.
We have a motion in support. This is an unfilled term, and it will return to the board when it becomes at the normal time, just so commissioners are aware and the public is aware. I thank you, Commissioner Hurl, for taking this. Any other nominations from the floor? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Duly carried. Commissioner Letchka.
Next, we have one public member to the Mid-South Substance Abuse Commission, and we have the committee nominates Michael Butchert.
We have motion in support.
Any other nominations from the floor? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Duly carried. Commissioner Letchka.
Next, we have one public member to the Mid-South Substance Abuse Commission, and we have the committee nominates Michael Butchert.
We have motion in support. Any other nominations from the floor? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Duly carried. Commissioner Letchka. We have a motion in support on Resolution 03-11.8, approving grant application for the Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund for the Parks, Sparks Park, Intercity Trail Connector Property Acquisition Product, Project. Any commissioner comments or discussion items? Commissioner Duckham. Or if you'd like to, we could direct the questions to the Parks Director, who's here also.
Yeah, I think Brandon's probably the appropriate person to answer that. Good evening. Yeah, the, the application deadline is April 1st, so we are under some time constraints from that angle.
Commissioner Letchka.
I believe from past experience, and maybe I'm, you can tell me if I'm wrong, but the, if you, grants from the trust fund cannot be used for maintenance, only for purchase of land? Is that...
Partially correct. There's actually two options you have. You can have development grants, or you can have acquisition grants. And the development grants, at first glance, without a lot of interaction with the staff at the trust fund, it would appear that a lot of things are eligible. Unfortunately, that is not the case, and I have approached the trust fund staff from, from those angles of the falls and from the dredging project. Unfortunately, those would not qualify under, under their, their current guidelines.
Any other commissioner questions? Mr. Way.
I guess, speaking as a member of the Parks Board, we have discussed this, we do think this is a proper use of, for an application. Also, we do have our Revive the Pride project where the lagoons are our next big major project, and Cascades Falls is on the radar of everybody. The county did give us $100,000 to study mostly the mechanic, mechanics of the falls, but that is in the Revive the Pride master plan, and I would encourage people who have concerns for that to, I can supply them with a pledge card.
Any other... Commissioner Rice.
Just real quick here. Obviously, this project, as I look through it, and as Commissioner Way just mentioned, it certainly appears to me that it meets our strategic plan as far as for recreation on a healthy community, so certainly, that is definitely a good thing. One of the questions I do have, though, it mentioned here that there would have to be a 25% to 40% local match, is that correct?
Correct. The, the trust fund, it varies, but you, you can set your grant match amount, and we, in this application, we'll be going with a 25%.
Okay, and a 25%, you had $62,500, and you mentioned here it would come from local foundation, businesses, individuals, and then after that, you had the word "and." What does that mean, "and"?
I have to look at it. That must be a typo. Private individuals, local foundations, will be, will, will be collecting that, that local match.
Okay, but you see, okay, so what you're saying is you're able to, you're going to be able to match that with the reasons or the, with the comments you put down here, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other commissioner comments? Let's vote using our lights, please. Resolution passes 11-0. Commissioner Letchka.
No other, excuse me, no other items, Chairman.
Thank you. Human Services chaired by Commissioner John Williams.
Mr. Chairman, Human Services has no business to come before this board this evening. Thank you.
Personnel and Finance chaired by Commissioner Jim Vito.
Yes, Mr. Chair, we have two items that have been moved to, from the consent agenda down to the Personnel and Finance Report, and for discussion, I make the first motion, that would be to transfer the $1,29,368, or 29,368, from the Justice Center Fund to the Capital Fund, and then same time, budget $95,000 in expenses to the District Court renovation project, and move the residual balance of $9,934,368 to the Justice Center Fund Transfer Reserve and Fund 245.
I have, I have a motion in support. Commissioners? Commissioner Elwell.
Mr. Chairman, I think I had expressed to Personnel and Finance that my feelings on it, which haven't changed to tonight, which are, I feel a sense of obligation, and again, to clarify how this fund came about, it's very well laid out in the letter from the administrator. That's a fee that was established by the courts back, I think, 2003 or so. It's not something the Board of Commissioners did approve or could approve. We cannot set the fees on tickets. As I recall, being here at the time, what the Board of Commissioners did was simply establish the fund where the money went. But, again, I've expressed concerns before Personnel and Finance about the importance, in my opinion, anyway, one commissioners to holding those funds or using those funds for the purpose that they were originally designated and taken from people in relation to traffic tickets, and that is for the Justice Center, or as we know, at the courthouse, or law enforcement-related matters. In having a brief conversation with the administrator and the chair just before the meeting started here, my first thought was to simply hold off on this transfer. I do support the portion of the project, I think it's $95,000 approximately, for the renovation project, I do support that. But again, I, I want to restate and hope we keep our hand on the fact that these funds, in my opinion, need to be retained for Justice Center projects, and I'm just, wanted to pull from the agenda so we could discuss it and think out loud about how we can assure that that's what happens with it. I know at Personnel and Finance, there were a number of things that were talked about that the money could be used for, and my belief is, in understanding that any expenditures of this remaining $934,368 would have to be approved by us, by the Board of Commissioners. And it, as I understand it also, it is mandatory that it be for capital projects, not for other things. But again, I want to be very cautious about how we spend that, and I think it's important to point out the history of where that fund came from. Public comment period, I think it was not abundantly clear that, by the letter that the administrator has given us here in the, in the motion, I think, is to move it to the Justice Center Transfer Reserve in Fund 245, which I assume is a capital improvement. So if we have to do that, I'll support doing it, I do strongly support spending the $95,000, but I will suggest at Personnel and Finance that we have continued discussions about how to more securely lock in this funding to make sure it's spent as best we can on the original purpose it was taken from the public on. Thank you.
Commissioner Way.
I echo a lot of Commissioner Elwell's comments, and I think this money was raised very specifically to be spent on what they called then the Justice Center, and now would be the courthouse. I think there's, I also support the $95,000 going to the first floor corrections, but I think there's a lot of other projects in that building that could be used for, and I just, I, I really think that it was specifically aimed, the money was raised for that purpose, and it should be spent for that purpose. Thank you.
Commissioner Hurl?
I guess I got to look at it, that this money has been put aside, and then the judges are passing it back to the county for our use. I see that we need $95,000 to do some remodeling of the courtrooms themselves, and by doing that, I guess I'd have to back up and see how much money has come on out of general fund, or some of the sheriff's options that he's had with software on his equipment and things like this. So I think, as this money is put aside, I don't think we're going to spend it all here on a tower building or any other building, but as this money comes up to be spent, every penny of it should be brought back to the Board of Commissioners, so that we can vote on it as to where the money goes. So to me, I'm going to vote yes on this project tonight.
Commissioner Rice.
All right, just to clarify, and maybe it's just for me, I understand the $95,000 that will, will be spent at the, at the courthouse or the Justice Center. I understand regards to moving the $934,368 to a capital fund. My question is, and much of it's been discussed already, and my question is, in regards to the over $900,000, each and every dollar, we will, as commissioners, have an opportunity to decide where that money goes, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's what I wanted to hear. Thank you.
Commissioner Duckham.
I know that when the judges decided to return this money, that they said they, you know, it was designated for the Judicial Center, and they didn't, other than the $95,000 were the improvements they currently need, they didn't see a specific need for building another, or the possibility of building another courthouse in the future. But I am with Commissioner Elwell and Commissioner Way that it was collected for a specific purpose, and I can support the $95,000 project, and I can support moving it to a capital fund, but I, I think the capital fund should be for court, building use only, and even if we don't use it right now, nothing says we have to spend it, it would make a nice down payment for a future project there. Thank you.
Any other commissioner comments? Any other Commissioner comments? Commissioner Vito.
A lot of good comments, a lot of concerns. I would just ask that for the support to move this forward, and I see some good discussion coming up in the future, Personnel and Finance, to, you know, give some direction to where those funds are gonna be used.
Any other Commissioner comments? Shall we vote, gentlemen?
About split vote, I think.
Mr. Duckham.
Could we, real clarification on what we're voting on here, the exact verbiage?
You're voting on the resolution. You want me to read the whole thing? You're voting to spend $95,000 at the courthouse and to move $934,368 to a capital fund reserve where, when the money needs to be spent, it'll come back to you to make a decision on where it goes? Is there more question? Commissioner Rice.
So all the conversation we've had, if it turned out that everyone voted for it to stay at the courthouse, it would stay there? Or if the vote, the majority said it would be split up in certain areas, that's what would happen then with the money?
That's correct.
So we're just voting on where the money's going, not ultimately what, or how it's gonna be spent.
The Administrator would like to clarify. Go ahead.
Thank you.
Yeah, just to be totally clear, the only money you're appropriating right now is the $95,000. The movement of the other $934,000 is purely an administrative move from a court fund to a general county fund. It doesn't obligate any of that. In my memo, I mentioned some of the capital concerns we have, but this action that I'm requesting to do tonight does not obligate or apply that funding to any of those items expressed in the memo.
Mr. Duckham.
One last question. I have to wonder if there's any legalities here that would be an issue with the money being collected for a specific fund and being moved by us.
Is that a rhetorical question, or do you want an answer from an attorney before we move this money? I will ask the Administrator to get back with you after the meeting. Any other Commissioner comments? Ladies and gentlemen, if you'd like to vote. Motion is carried. Commissioner Vito.
Okay, we have another item that was pulled from the consent agenda this evening, and that was on the recommendation by the interim Administrator Controller to amend the non-union handbook to create a handbook, to create a senior management benefit change to pay time off. I would make that motion.
We have a motion in support. Any Commissioner comments? Mr. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The, I think oftentimes, we get into a situation where we have these discussions, one-on-one with the Administrator to clarify some background, and for the benefit of the public, who weren't able to attend, maybe Personnel and Finance or other areas where we have these discussions. But if the Administrator wouldn't mind giving some background in terms of why, or maybe members of the Board, since it predates our Administrator, the 2007 non-paid-off, non-union paid time off benefit was reduced across the board, and how that process worked, and for what purpose, if we get that information.
Administrator Brown.
Well, I wasn't here in 2000 when that happened. I think that was part of negotiation in the unions and the, in the non-union follows. I can tell you, my reason now is, what we're asking for is somebody, when, inside the organization, we've determined that there's nobody capable to fulfill that job, to promote. If that person, if a person was promoted, this would not be a concern, because they'd have a number of years' service and have a level of leave built up. But we've made a decision that there's not somebody in staff qualified to do that. So we're going outside the organization and asking somebody who probably has 15 to 20 years' experience, and most of our department heads have minimum bachelor degrees, sometimes, most of the time masters, or graduate degrees, and we're asking them to come in and have 15 days of leave. Most of their employees are gonna have, some of their employees will have double that. And just to make clear, we don't differentiate between PTO and sick leave. So that 15 days is for being sick and being, and your vacation. And I think about, I mean, I'm fortunate to be a person, my wife stays home with the kids, but I think about two-parent households. Most households now have two parents working in them. And if you've got a kid, that's five days right off the top that you're gonna have to stay home, because your kid's gonna be sick from school, at least that much. And then that doesn't take into consideration that you might be sick. And I think this is just a, this is a reasonable request. In fact, I mean, in my view, it probably doesn't go far enough, but I understand the difficulty of doing, making a recommendation like this. So that's, that's the genesis of it. It is timely now, because I hope to make an offer for an HR Director tomorrow. And again, this is a senior manager, 20 years' experience, graduate degree, and I see that as a barrier to somebody, to getting a highly qualified person in here.
Any other Commissioner comments? Commissioner Elwell?
Well, just a quick comment. We, I think, have done very well in our department heads that we picked, and it's for a lot of reasons. A lot of thought goes into those things. And I, for one, put a lot of stock in what our past Administrator and current Administrator recommend to us, and we look at historical things that we've done right, so I'll be supporting it.
Any other Commissioner comments?
Mr. Chairman, second round? Well, I just wanted, yeah, just one, just one comment, yeah, absolutely.
Mr. Williams. Any other Commissioner comments? All in favor? Opposed? Duly carried. Commissioner Vito.
Mr. Chair, no more items from Personnel and Finance to come forward this board this evening.
Now, gone to unfinished business? Any to come before the board? Seeing none, we've now arrived at new business. Item A, Administrator Controller Search Profile Approval. I'll entertain a motion, please. I have a motion in support. Do we have any questions or any comments on the, on the profile?
Well, we're gonna, we can call up Sharon.
This is the second round of public comment. If you'd like to address the board, please feel free to.
Regarding the Justice Center Fund Transfer, is the county beginning to experience financial Because again, according to this memo by Mr. Brown, it states, in the past two budget presentations, I've spoken to the board about significant capital expenditures coming up, as well as our inability to fund ongoing capital maintenance costs. Then he lists three various maintenance costs, I believe, which are maintenance costs. But again, the tone of this memo gives to those of us in the general public, at least most of us who read these, a little bit of an alarm. And it's not what we hear on the radio, it's not what we read in the newspaper. We're on sound financial footing, correct? Well, not according to this. How much is the grant going to be for, for the new trail? That was never even mentioned on the amount of the grant. I know you can't answer that during public comment, but the 25 percent that the county will have to come up with, now, Mr. Way, you mentioned the Revive the Pride. Well, the Revive the Pride is also dependent on private donations. So now we're gonna be having private donations that we're gonna have to collect from the private sector, according to Director, oh, I'm sorry, I forgot your last name. The Director of the Parks, who does a great job. Brandon, thank you. But anyway, so we're gonna have to collect the 25 percent for this new walking path to connect to the intercity trail. And at the same time, Mr. Way, you're so generous, and to, you know, ask all of us to donate, you have your cards right with you, I'm sure, for the Revive the Pride. Okay, so now you're gonna be competing with Revive the Pride with this new trail, correct? You gotta get that 25 percent. Thank you.
Seeing none, we've arrived at Commissioner comments. Commissioner Lutzke.
As you all should remember by now, Project Red is a week from today at the fairgrounds. We do need volunteers to lead third graders around. Commissioner Hurl said he'd be there. I wanna see how many other hands will come up, so I can tell them we're gonna have three there, four? Thank you.
Any other Commissioner comments? Commissioner Alexander.
I would just like to address the Commissioners that a request has been made for the Jackson County Commissioners to dip ice cream at the Jackson County Fair this year. We are being asked by the Jackson County Real Dairy Promotion Association to volunteer our services again. And yes, you do get to wear the hairnets again. I am prepared to commit to this. I would offer any suggestions as to the day of the week that we would like to serve our community in this way, and I believe a donation is made to our organization, which we can pass on to whatever funds we so deem. So with that being said, feel free to contact me and offer input, Commissioners.
Commissioner, any other comments? Commissioner Elwell.
Just two quick comments, Mr. Chairman. First is, I've had questions from the public about the Ad-Hoc Animal Control Ordinance Committee. I talked with Adam tonight, and Adam will be setting dates, hopefully this weekend, on when those meetings will start. And secondly, if we could have the Administrator give just a brief update, maybe on the second floor, on when that'll be done. I've heard from the public asking about that also, and it might be good just to mention. Thank you.
Any other Commissioner comments? Mr. Williams.
Just one announcement, a different Project Red is going on as well, and that's the Red Cross event. That'll be, it's a pop-up art gallery. It'll be at the Vermulins/Masonic Temple on Thursday, the 24th. That's a VIP event. After that, it's open to the public to take a look at local artists and raise dollars for your local Red Cross. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other Commissioner comments? Mr. Rice.
Again, real quick, to Commissioner Alexander, if I decide to scoop ice cream, do I even have to wear a hairnet?
Yes, I believe it's state mandated.
And also, I could've said this earlier, but in regards to the, the profile that was put together for the Administrator Controller Search, I found it extremely well-done, thorough, and I really liked the fact that, how they implemented our strategic plan throughout the whole thing. And it was also good that I was able to collaborate by email with Administrator Brown on some of the, some of the ideas that I had as well, so I just wanna also mention that.
Any other Commissioners? I'd like to make the general public aware of two other opportunities for public comment contrary to this. These aren't done, these decisions aren't made before they come to the Board of Commissioners, you know, in secret. We have an Administrator's meeting that is the first Friday at 7:30 on this floor. There's also standing committees that go on on the following Monday. I extend that invitation to you to come and address us then also, if you have direct concerns on what you'd like to see direction on, or maybe get answers to some of your questions. Please. At this time, I'd like to adjourn. Thank you.